Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
...initiative this evening. On the education front, we believe that he'll also talk about an initiative that's been very important to him called A- through F. It's transparency, it's accountability for our school system. It is highly controversial. So whether the legislature wants to move this forward in an election year is still undecided. But we do believe that he will talk about the A- through S initiative for our public school system, which is grading the schools on an A to M letter grading system. We don't have the details of plans to lay that out, but it's something that he and the Department of Education, Brian Wiston, have been talking about for a couple of years. So we can anticipate some conversations of that as well. The rest of the state of the state has been kept pretty quiet. If you recall, last year, the governor really did propose a lot of new initiatives. And we believe that will be the opposite this evening, that the governor will come out with probably several initiatives that he'd like the legislature to work on. I believe that we will be giving a briefing about one. So if there's any additional information that could pertain to the county, we'll get that to you prior to the Governor's State of the State address. Typically, the legislature does not do any significant legislative items prior to the Governor's State of the State. They allow this to be his time to lay out the Republican initiative. However, this year, it's a little different. They've already started and passed two significant pieces of legislation. First was a governor's override of the sales tax on the difference. The governor had vetoed it in December. The legislature was not happy with that veto. So they decided last week that they will override it. It was overturned very easily in both chambers. It's the phase out from 2039 to 2029. It's not a significant cost each year, but it's something that clearly was very important to the legislature. So they went ahead and moved forward with that. There's also conversation in which the governor probably will talk about this evening, dealing with in the federal tax code, they eliminated the $4,000 personal exemption that Michigan needs to go in and then re-implement through our legislative process. The governor has proposed, and probably will talk about this evening, increasing that to $4,500 a personal exemption. The Senate last week had the initiative, and they moved it to $5,000. And they plan to move either this week or next week, an additional $500 credit for those individuals that care for the elderly or children. It would be an elderly-child tax credit of $500 on addition to that. And that is a phase in up to 2021. The House plans to move legislation, I think, beginning tomorrow with their version, which would move that personal tax exemption up to $4,800, and then offer a $100 tax credit to senior citizens. So we have three different versions. They'll probably have to resolve it through a conference committee, come with a price tag of somewhere upward of $200 to $250 million each year when fully implemented. But those are the issues that are moving very quickly through the legislature. Following the State of the State, the governor plans to outline his budget address, which will be delivered February 7. The revenue estimating conference a couple of weeks ago indicated that there's very little growth, probably 1.8% growth in the budget for this year as well as next year. So while we're making some progress, there's not going to be a whole lot of new money for some of these projects. We do have the legislature, it's one of their priority, getting rid of the driver responsibility fees. And those could come at a huge cost as well, upwards of $600 million, depending on how it will be implemented. But it's clearly a priority for both the House and the Senate. The difference is how aggressive they want to be and how expansive they want to be is when they get rid of that. But that will be a cost to the state as well. So there are a lot of initiatives that the legislature is working on. Not necessarily the money is not following that. So we'll have to see how they make those resolutions amongst themselves. But those are the initiatives that are going on in the next couple. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Any questions for Becky today? Appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Chair. Morning, Becky. Yesterday, I heard about that the DEQ is working on rewriting solid waste, the Act 451. Can you give any context to that? What I heard was that they're relying on solid waste haulers and recyclers to help write that rewrite. Can you offer any other?
I don't have any significant detail. I believe there was a very extensive workgroup meeting, if you will, last week. We did have one of our partners attend that meeting. So I'd be happy to get some notes and some thoughts from him and forward those on to you today.
Do you know whether that workgroup included members of the public sector?
I do not know who was included. I think it was a very large group of individuals that met. I don't know if it's the first of many, or this is just the end portion of the conversation. But let me do some homework on that and give that away.
Commissioner Willman.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Yes. Some of my constituents voters are concerned that there may be some legislation rising through the state government at the state level, where millages they voted on for public school funding can now be tapped into if some of this legislation passes through, will be able to, millages that they voted for for public schools will now have access by charter schools. Is that some legislation that they should be concerned with?
You are correct. That legislation did pass the Senate, but ended the year. And last week, the House did approve it narrowly, I believe on Thursday, with the necessary votes required. So it will be on its way to the governor. I am not aware when the governor has indicated whether he will sign it or not, but the legislature did just recently give final approval to it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Becky today? All right. Thank you for coming. Appreciate your update. I'm sure some of us will see you tonight in the State of the State. All right. Moving on to item four, we have a presentation from Scott Gilman at Network 180. I had asked Scott to come in and kind of give us an update of what's happening with some of the funding and where we're at in current status in light of some of these cuts. So thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. And first of all, I want to thank the Commission, Wayman and Math, and specifically the Network 180 board members. Honestly, I don't think that if it wasn't for the advocacy of Kent County and us working together, that we would have a public mental health system in Michigan right now, were not for the work that all of these individuals have done over the last couple of years. Our system really has been, I don't know if under a tax is the right word, but a lot of people trying to figure out a better way to make things happen. And we're all for that. So I want to start out with some disclaimers. I'm going to go fast over some stuff because it's pretty complicated. I'm in the process of writing, or we're putting our annual report together, and we're putting a supplemental to the annual report together that will expand on a lot of these things that we're talking about today. One of the problems that we've had over the last couple of years is people understanding the revenue and exactly how it works and the facts about Network 180. And so what I've been trying to do is give a consistent message about the facts about what we have done, what we haven't done, and then what is our stratech moving forward. So there is a crisis going on with the budget in our region. First fact that I want you to understand is if you talk to the state, if you talk to our elected officials, there has not been a budget cut to our region. The appropriation was as much, if not more, than in previous years. Autism funding went up, but it's after the funding left the checkbook in Lansing and started to go through all of the administrative processes, that's where we ended up with the issue that we have today. The other thing that I hear a lot when we start talking about budget issues at Network 180 is, oh, Network 180, they've hired all kinds of people over the last couple of years. And that's what their problem is about. And so here's the facts. We received a grant from the Health Endowment Fund to start a behavioral health home. This is a demonstration, a center of excellence, where we did indeed hire 14 staff, majority of their salaries funded with grants. And we renovated some space at the Fuller Building, and we started that program. Those, best practices will be rolled out to our community. So 14 staff were hired for that. Our board is doing a pilot on supports coordination, where we're looking at a model to improve satisfaction across the entire provider network. We worked with county, a lot of people in the community, to develop a crisis, children's crisis response team that started over the last year. That was a collaborative community project funded in large part by childcare funds. If you remember, last Memorial, I was on the TV for 26 kids stacked up at Allen DeVos Hospital that were waiting for an inpatient psychiatric hospital bed, stacked up because we didn't have a better alternative for them. So I don't make apologies for the responses that Network 180 has made to the community. The medication clinic additions, where to get meds to those kids, that we could keep them in the community. Also, some grants, and then the old-fashioned replacement hires. So again, yes, Network 180 has hired a lot of staff. My HR director is exhausted. So the thing that I hear a lot is, you know, this is what I hear, Scott, you're spending like a drunken sailor. Why didn't you live within your means? Why didn't you live within your budget? Well, here's our budget for Medicaid, for old-fashioned, traditional Medicaid for last year, $104 million. And here's our actual expenses as of our last FSR. Now, this number is not finalized. We're working on closing the books right now. But it's somewhere in that area. That's a freakishly close bullseye, even for us, in terms of living within our means. You'll see that the cash that we actually collected, though, that was collected by the region through the process of distribution, was only $94 million. And that is the crux of the DAB issue that we're going to talk about in just a minute. Healthy Michigan is the other issue. Healthy Michigan started, we all remember, during Medicaid expansion. The first year that it was rolled out, the rates were set by the actuaries. Way too much money got pushed out to the system. And the PIHPs were setting on great big reserves. So the state said for the next two years, spend those reserves down, spend them down, and we're going to reset the rates. So we knew at the beginning of '17 that we were overspending in our Healthy Michigan. I knew right from the very first month that we were overspending our Healthy Michigan dollars. Ongoing discussion at the state level about the rates that are paid for Healthy Michigan need to be adjusted. And also, the other discussion was people were starting to see this movement of people that have Healthy Michigan insurance to DAB insurance. Let me just explain what that is. If you've been in the system for years and years and years, and you're in one of our programs, and you're there because of your disability, or your age, or you're blind, you get what's called DAB Medicaid. It's been around forever. When expansion came through and was rolled out, there's a new category of Medicaid called Healthy Michigan, instead of Obamacare expansion. In order to get that, all you have to do is meet an income test. In other words, be low-income. Very easy to get, over 600,000 people in Michigan signed up for it. Governor, probably tonight, is being a huge success. And it has been a huge success to some degree. The problem that we've had is that the federal regulations state that if you're a DAB individual, you cannot be eligible for Healthy Michigan. Well, thousands of people in Michigan have transferred over to Healthy Michigan. My first approach to dealing with this topic and my advocacy was, wait a minute, this is bad. This should have never happened. And what we're realizing is, yeah, it should have never happened according to the federal regulations. But for some of our consumers, the Healthy Michigan product actually has even a little bit better coverage for them. So if I have a severely disabled person that's been waiting for dental care for years, and they can get dental care, great. They just have to understand that it's a different coverage. And as you know, what happens in Washington, Healthy Michigan can be gone, can be, you know, defunded. And then after a certain number of years, they have to pass a test of being medically frail. We're working through all of that in that maybe this isn't necessarily the end of the world for the individuals, as long as they're educated and they know what's happening. The problem, again, from an advocacy standpoint, is many, many people didn't know this happened to them. They, if you don't complete your paperwork on time and properly, the system automatically will enroll somebody in Healthy Michigan. So it's a surprise to them. And that is a big issue. But in terms of the benefit itself, it could be better for them as long as they're educated. So this discussion, this argument, happened with the state, and they weren't exactly in alignment with us that this was a big deal. So the PIHPs in the state hired an independent firm, Raymond, used to be Raymond and Associates, an audit firm. They ran the data for the entire state, and they were able to show indeed that there were $97 million worth of people that used to be DAB, disabled, aged, and blind, that were now no longer disabled, aged, and blind. They were now Healthy Michigan. That's the debate that we're having right now. The department, as late as last week, said, well, that doesn't matter because as many people went the other way. It was a bidirectional movement. And so it really shouldn't matter. And so the position that the association is working on right now is, it doesn't matter that they moved from Healthy Michigan to DAB, because Healthy Michigan is easy. That's for people who show up in the emergency room, don't have any insurance, and we're done right away. But if they have a disability, they should go to the appropriate Medicaid status. They shouldn't go the other way. And more importantly, when the actuary set the rates for the system, they didn't set the rates based on that movement. So our position is, there's $97 million that should have been pushed out, that has not been pushed out. And for our region, for the Lake Shore region, that equals over a two-year period of about $10 million. This is why it matters. Quick little payment, insurance language per member per month, or I frequently use, people understand schools. So on count day in schools, it's every butt in the seat, you get the school district gets that payment. For us, it's every month, for everybody who has DAB, the PIHP gets this payment. For everybody who has Healthy Michigan, they get this payment and the TANF. And that's the big migration. To compound our situation, there was an issue with autism, a very similar issue where the autism system was underfunded, and the state agreed and recognized it. And they fixed it for this year going forward. The problem is, is that it wasn't retroactive to last year. So that resulted in a use of cash at the regional level of about $6.2 million. Short story of this was, there was a lawsuit filed statewide, autism services. We were given the message, go and build autism services as fast as you can build them. Get these kids in services. We're going to cost-settle with you. We don't care what it, we have a lawsuit. We needed to build, build, build. We did. Guess what? The costs were really high for the services in our contracts with our providers. And the state said, oh, you're getting gouged. The costs are too high. We're going to cap your rates. And they did. $6 million out of our savings account. We in turn now have reduced our rates to our providers, who in turn have to deal with their staff and downstream. So I have these things, approximately a $10 million issue without any revenue fix at Network 180. And our region has an approximate $23 million issue that we're having to deal with because of these issues. So a quick update on what we've done. We've looked at all of the things that we can do. We're in this incredible double bind, where we can't reduce services that are medically appropriate, but we have to live within our means. So we have to figure out what we can do, and unfortunately, things like our staff and community benefit programs. As we move forward with announcing our reduction, Center for Integrated Medicine over in the Hartside District, we have four FTEs that are paid for there, doing incredible work. Dr. Fawcett through the Human Services Council, and again, some of the advocacy work that we did locally, they were able to step up and fund those four positions. So we didn't have to close that. And actually, if anybody knows Dr. Ken Fawcett, he went to work on this for us. On the day, he called me at night, and he said, please don't act on this. Let me see what I can do. And so on the day of his bronchial thingy, Bob, I'm mental health, not physical health, they actually had a meeting in pre-op before he went in for his bronchosomy. And that night, he called me, and he was very excited. And he's, I picked up the phone like 8 o'clock, like, Scott, we've got the funding. Don't close the program. So it was a great example of how Kent can come together and make things happen. Unfortunately, other reductions that I had to make, I had to make. And so you can see 12 administrative staff, five clinical staff, mostly in our access center, and then holding on the 15 positions that I have vacant, all salary, everything. Talked a little bit about the double bind. So here's the double bind that mental health frequently gets put into. Autism was another example. One of the things that we could do was close community benefit programs, and the region is only required to have one clubhouse. Sheldon House, if you might have seen this on the news, operated by Cherry Health. God knows, we didn't want to think about closing clubhouse. It was absolutely penny wise and pound foolish. But it was one of the only things that we can do. And when you're looking at insolvency, you have to do what you can do. On December 27, the PIHP contacted the state and said, we're going to close all the clubhouses except for one in the region. That's what the Medicaid manual says. Are there any changes that are happening? We're hearing rumor from Cherry Health that there are changes that are going to be made. The PIHP director received an email back from the state. I don't know what you're talking about. There's no discussions of changes happening in this administration. We move forward. January 4, the PIHP director receives a memo. You better not close any clubhouses in your region, because we think we're going to be changing the rules. So this was wonderful in that we didn't want to close the region, but Senator McGregor, Senator Hildebrandt were right in the middle of this. And they actually wrote the news to us that the department said, don't close it. Great, absolutely great. But there's $1 million out of our budget that we have to figure out how we're going to cover. These are other optional, in terms of we can figure them out differently. Our place, a drop-in center for peers, operated by Hope Network. Supported housing program, this Denny Sturdivant talked at the Human Services Council about how silly this is, how our community has worked for years to put together housing options for people, and a more lenient approach to letting our individuals into long-term housing, because we have co-located social work staff by Pine Rust in our housing complexes. Well, unfortunately, those are not required, and are more staffing grants. So those are programs that we've had to discontinue. Nursing home monitoring, it's another example. We go above and beyond in nursing homes. It makes sense, as are recent nursing homes, to help link people to the community. Not everybody stays there forever. But we have to back that down to the absolute minimum that's required for nursing home. Nuovo, again, a program operated by Cherry Health, a statin grant, an outreach to the Hispanic population. And so that position has been eliminated. Native American, again, community outreach services affecting the minority population. We have underserved groups in our community that we staff and put extra funds in to reach out to. This is another example. And FOC had two positions that this impacts. So that's the point I'm trying to make, too, is this doesn't just impact Network 180's staff. This impacts all of our provider network staff in the community. And then again, Arbor Circle, North County Outreach. And this was, we have a really difficult time getting services to individuals in the northern corner of Kent County. So this is a staff person that goes up there. Jack can't make a go of it unless we subsidize it up there for him. So now those individuals will need to drive down. The other scary thing that's happening is, as the region is overspending their dollars for this year, and we enter into risk corridor with the state, the use of liquor tax dollars to make up the revenue problem at the state is really causing me a lot of concern. State is pointing at liquor tax and saying to the PIHP, you know, you need to pay your bills. Liquor taxes, local tax dollars, actually flows through this commission and then goes to the PIHP. And we use it for things like our approach to the opioid epidemic, Housing First, Wellhouse, that just opened up. And we also have always used it to plan to overspend our Medicaid dollars. So for our methadone Medicaid assisted treatment program, we don't try to live within our means there historically, because we would use liquor tax to cover that. So this is concerning, and we cannot use general fund to cover a deficit. So why we're advocating so hard on a revenue fix is, what's resulting is local liquor tax dollars are being used to subsidize a funding process for federal dollars that should be fixed, and is getting some traction. I'm getting fixed. But this is the solution that state's pointing at for us. And finally, we're moving a lot of our people out of our care that have disabilities into psychiatric, that have been long-term psychiatric, since receiving their services directly from a psychiatrist. We're trying to move them into their primary care doctor. So as a result of the funding crisis, the LRE Board chaired by Commissioner Steck had an emergency meeting on January 18, and essentially looked at a variety of solutions, and how do we move forward to get the region out of this issue, and help really resolve the issue so that we don't necessarily fall victim to what we sometimes hear as the privatization of the public mental health system. So the board voted, public-private partnership with an MCO to move forward. Also, discussions of cash flow. We have cash issues, and I've not been very quiet about that. Last year, when the region had a lot of, not a lot, when the region had not gone through all of the risk reserves, we were able to get an advance from them, and they do not have that this year. So we're currently working with the region on securing cash from the private market. That's not done yet. The RFP is being written for the MCO services, and I hope that's out quickly. The PIHP Board is also asking the CMHs, recognizing that we have this problem in the region, and there's perceptions of duplication on the department. We're not really fighting for status quo. From a public policy standpoint, this hasn't worked for us. So we're not fighting for it. And we're not also fighting for Network 180 not to change. We definitely need to move forward. So this is what this whole resolution is about, is for the CMHs to put on the table that we are willing to change and evolve and achieve more efficiencies, and we want to demonstrate that to the state. As we move forward, there's this, you know, I'm talking a lot to my staff about double bind. Last night, we had public comment, I don't know what the cuts are, Scott, you know, or Network 180 Board, we don't know where the cuts. Well, we can't just go out and make cuts. There's two sides of this equation that have to fit together, and we've been only successful at really hearing the one side. One side says, services that are medically appropriate must be provided in amount, scope, and duration. And then there's the other side of the equation that says, PIHPs and the Medicaid manual, you have to put in place policies and procedures to live within your means. And I'm paraphrasing, but there's two opposing who's. And the PIHP's responsibility is to come together and to say, we are going to put in place limits, we are going to put in place policies and procedures. limits, we are going to put in place policies and procedures and protocols that will guide the system." And I think the best example of that would be if you would consider somebody that's severely disabled and they need 24-hour one-on-one. Medically appropriate for them to receive 24-hour one-on-one care, yeah, you could make a really strong argument of that. But what if we can't afford it? Then that's where we need these procedures and protocols that says, "If you need 24-hour care, one-on-one, perhaps that's going to be provided in a group home setting." So, that's the, that's the internal stuff that we're working on and that's the double bind that we have and that's why I can't walk out to my board and say, "I'm going to shut that whole thing down that is immediately going to impact those treatment plans." It has to be more in these community benefit stuff. We also have been asked, and this is a really good sign, by the department and specifically by Senator Hildebrandt, "Get your end-of-the-year numbers in." So, we typically don't have to get our end-of-the-year numbers in until the end of February. We've been asked to do it within the next seven days. So, we've been pretty much, now we, my staff has been pretty much working around the clock to make that happen. And so, I see that as a good sign that there's a lot of activity happening. Senator Hildebrandt talked about a meeting of 10 West Michigan legislatures with over 30 staff that were present. That's a really good sign, some movement that we're, that we're getting some, some action. So, next steps, restructure the region to a better, to achieve better outcomes, reduce administrative costs, maintain public governance. That really is our, you know, you have the battles or the skirmishes, the battles and then the war. The war is, at least the marching orders that I have from, from my board that represents you is, "We don't want California managing the mental health system in Kent County. We want this board, our board, to manage the mental health system in Kent County." That's really the bigger issue that's at stake. We have to get this right. We have to restructure. But at the end of the day, when all is said and done, the department says mismanagement, there's other issues here, there's other smoke and mirrors. I want to just draw your attention quickly. I did give you a copy of the Raymond report, but to cost per consumer, again, this is a fact that I want to give you so that... The Raymond report shows you the $97 million over two years. That's one page. And then, I hate when people give me documents like this in a presentation, so I'm just going to draw your attention right to the, right to the number. If you look on the first page, it says, "Region three, consumers with developmental disability." Okay? If you look down the left-hand side, you'll see it says, "CMH, cost per consumer, state average, Aligan, Muskegon, Network 180." So, you will hear from people in, around the state, a fact-based statement that Network 180 is unwilling to change. And I will tell you that this is why we have been resistant to change in some areas. In 2015, we had a financial crisis. If you remember, it blew up and consumers were, were here, they were at board meeting and the state issued a memo to the region. Network 180 in 2015 was wrong in that we were acting like a PHP. We had a process in place that appropriately limited services for individuals that had a developmental disability and that process had been in place for years. The problem is, as a community mental health, we are prohibited from having our own processes in place. Blew up. You can see, if you go down to Network 180, time that blew up, our average cost per consumer went from 23,000, you know, every year, 23, 24. We now have had a full cycle of treatment plans that have been completed that's impacting our cost per consumer and that's gone to 28,000 per consumer. We're talking over 2,000 consumers. I'm putting a white paper together on this and I'm calling it the six, or the 12, $6 million man when I was, when I was a kid, but I'm calling it the $12 million memo from the department. That's what happened. So, unfortunately, the attention for Network 180 has been not on, not on the $12 million memo, it's been on the, our inpatient hospitalization for adults with mental illness are too high. I can point you to similar numbers in the MI side where it'll show you that our, our cost per consumer for adults with mental illness is lower than the state average and it always has been. So, our common argument to the state is our cost per consumers for inpatient hospitalization for adults with mental illness is not too high. Appropriate. We're giving you the lowest cost per consumer, one of the lowest cost per consumers in the state. But the way the funding formula works, it doesn't work that way. So, as you move forward with political careers and dealing with our legislature in Lansing, there's some fundamental flaws to how the system views outcomes. And so, you hear a lot about school reform. I think mental health reform, as Speaker Leonard talked about and others are talking about, is way overdue, but it's, it's things like this, when you look at a system that has way far, far lower cost and equal if not better outcomes and they're penalized, that's a funding flaw in how the system works. And so, we can get into actuarial science and all that other kind of stuff at a different time, but that's the, that's the crash course of exactly where we're at as of today. And as of last night, we talked about some of our other challenges that we've had. Had a pretty significant chronic health system failure, but we've got that behind us. The board voted on, on that last night and so, I think we're getting that cleaned up. That didn't cause this problem. The health system didn't cause this problem. Starting our grant-funded programs didn't cause this problem. This is a revenue problem for the large part that we have to work on collectively to get it fixed. So, I'm going to stop talking.
All right.
I didn't hit anything, so unhappy. Questions and answers, please.
Not one question. Commissioner Steck.
Well, that's a bunch of questions. It is maybe a follow-up one. One of the pushbacks that I frequently get when we talk about the DAB enrollment migration, which is, so if these expensive DAB enrollees are leaving the population, why is that such a big deal? Because that means you probably have to spend less to serve this population and that's the missing link. Because we are paid on a, on a rotated basis, the population of DAB that generates our revenue goes down as there's migration. But the percentage of that population that actually gets service isn't changing.
Right.
And in fact, the cost of that service are, is pushing up. So, as the enrollees leave, the source of revenue goes down and the cost goes up. So, thus the push. So, it is a big deal when the, when the DAB enrollment changes. One of the things that Linda Zeller had said was that they don't think that the DAB enrollment migration is to healthy Michigan. They think it's a migration out of the system entirely. To me, that's actually worse than to healthy Michigan. Can you talk about that a bit?
Well, I think we have to be really careful at this juncture because Commissioner Talon and I talked briefly last night, that Senate Fiscal is talking a different story than some of the reporting from Raymond and the Association. So, my initial reaction is, I'm not sure that I agree with that, but I'm also going to say that I got burned before by having incorrect data out there. And so, I think we need to dig into it a little bit more on what she's saying and what, and specifically what Senate Fiscal is saying. I think, I think our position is going to be the same, is that there were still $90 worth of people that did what the federal regulations said they can't do. And maybe that is an issue and this is an issue, but I think, I think I have to... Getting burned before, we need to be really careful and, and listen and learn about exactly what she's saying and what Senate Fiscal is saying.
And the other comment is, the state will repeatedly assert that the reserve system, this pot of money that the PHPs hold is what's there to kind of cushion through these ebbs and flows in enrollment, which is true except for if the ebb and flow is too great and the reserves are too low. It just swamps it over and that's exactly what's happening.
It is, yeah. And, and again, it's how the, how the data is presented. Statewide, if you look at statewide what reserves are available, even if you look at our, at our PHP just to the south of us in the, in the Kalamazoo region, they're a very, very healthy, have reserves. So, statewide, the, the percentage that needs to be there is, is appropriate. Problem is, our good buddies in Kalamazoo can't shift the, the funds that are available up to us. So, if the, if the position is, well, statewide, the system should be able to accommodate this within the 5%, there's enough money out there. That might be true, but it's not true in this, in this region.
Any other comments or questions, Chris Gage?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to expand a little on the information I heard yesterday, which was at the MAC Health and Human Services Committee meeting and Steve Angelotti from the Senate Fiscal Agency talked about the problem. And what, what struck me is that he talked about a hundred dollar difference between DAB and healthy Michigan. Well, it's always been 200. We sat there, I questioned that, he was certain about his numbers and while we sat there, another commissioner from Ottawa County also checked with his staff. They've got, it's $225. That's a big difference that we need to figure out. Why do, why is Senate Fiscal and potentially the department talking about a hundred dollar difference? To Commissioner Steck's point, you know, there is a process in place and there are others within the system that will talk about the systems, should be able to take care of the ebb and flow. But, and for years, being on the Network 180 Board, I saw we would go under our projected Medicaid revenue, but it was like 1%. So, it was always manageable from one year to another. Now, the numbers are so big that we just can't handle it. So, so it's really important to, I think, figure out what those numbers really are and what that, what that difference is and why it is.
Yeah, I, I have two emails out, Commissioner Talon, so that was very curious, you know, so as soon as I get word back. I've got one into the Association and one into our CFO to find that out.
Any other questions, Commissioner Gage?
So, going back to page one, I guess the second slide, you mentioned the behavioral health home, but those 14 FTEs were mostly from a grant. What does mostly mean, I guess, and...
About 60%. It's a $1 million grant, dollar grant that we received from the Health Endowment Fund. So, these are, so actually it would help our, our Medicaid situation because those are Medicaid services that we're actually able to use grant-funded staff to provide those services for.
Good.
Commissioner Steck?
Hey, Chair, just one more set of comments. The, the response to this crisis is, as Scott has indicated, is really twofold. One is the revenue side of this equation, that is addressing as best and effectively as we can our contacts at the legislature to push for a funding response. And the second is the restructuring. That is, within the system itself, we need to do everything that's within our power to restructure the system so it's not only done as efficiently as it can, but the state understands and perceives it as functioning as effectively as it can. And those two together are really the strategy to preserve the public system. And either one of those failing could lead to the loss of the public system here, so... And that requires a change. It obviously requires the PHP, the LRE to radically change and redo how it's functioning, but it also requires the CMHs like Network 180 do that. So, I acknowledge Scott and, and Network 180, they understand that, they're on board to do that. It can't happen overnight. It is a long process. As you described, the revenue adjustments take a long time to implement, as do restructuring. So, it's not going to happen overnight, but it's a process that they're committed to and, and we are making a difference with it. So, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple, if you'll indulge me. One on page, I think we started on page four. I had asked, and I really appreciate you giving us specifically, how many people are going to be affected in each of these areas that we're cutting? And I, and I appreciate that we're, we're getting those. I think all of us probably up here want to be sure that, you know, those individuals that are impacted are being taken care of. How are we going to take care of them? That is my concern. Is there any way, for instance, on some of this nursing home monitor, monitoring, is that something that maybe, you know, our senior admin pick up? Are there areas where maybe other groups in, in our community can kind of pick up these services that you know of and do we need to reach out to them or is there anything we can do to help in that respect?
That's a really good question. I think we've been a little bit lethargic as we've moved forward because we're, our, our different teams are working with the different providers to kind of do exactly what you're talking about, Co. I think, I think the advocacy that we're getting more on the, on the revenue side would be, would be most helpful. The Human Services Council, the foundations have really come together and like I said, Spectrum stepped up to the table and helped. So, I think for each of these programs, with the exception of the Hispanic outreach, I think we have really good solutions. So, if I can, I guess, that, that, all of the others I'm feeling pretty comfortable with, Hispanic outreach, I'm not feeling so comfortable with in terms of us. So, if you have thoughts or connections or ideas in that area, that would be one. But more importantly, the revenue side and the making sure that there even is a public system here next year for us to figure this out with.
And then my second comment, I guess I'll ask, I'll have an ask and a comment. You know, I worked in the legislature a long time, I have those relationships, I think we all have relationships with legislators. We need to know what's the ask. I know Commissioner Steck has had exhausted meetings and I know your staff is, is working really hard to get those numbers. You said you had to expedite your numbers to the end of this month instead of February, but I think it would behoove us to all get on the same page in terms of what is our specific ask. We've got Becky at PAA, we, you know, all of us here want to row in the same direction and help. So, if you could, could A, get us that or with that, or maybe we need to get together and formulate that, but we need to do it soon.
Yep.
And communicate with each other and know what we need. Secondly, kind of more long-term, after we get through that, we are putting together our legislative priorities. And you had mentioned, you know, there are specific reforms needed in just the way things are structured and the way things are, you know, appropriated. If you could help us kind of formulate some of those ideas, we would want to add those to our legislative priorities and want to work on that. So, get through this initial hemorrhage.
Absolutely.
But, long-term, we want to get that fixed and help in any way we can.
Yep. And I can address the specific ask. On the next steps, I just didn't put infusion of cash, but these are really, these are really the asks. We need a, we need a short-term cash fix.
So, supplemental? Because they're working on the 19th, they're going to probably start with that.
Yep, I will do pop can drives, I will do whatever. But we, we need, we need an infusion of cash to stabilize the system. Second thing, we need a minute to not have status quo. We're not fighting to keep the region as it is, we're not fighting to keep the CMHs as they're as. That's the second bullet. And then third thing is, a clear message to the state, we get it that we've got to do it differently, but don't you dare think about giving this to a for-profit company. Those are the, I think those are the, the three asks. Infusion of cash, let us, give us the time to appropriately restructure this with public governance and get that done. But I, I think we have a, a better, a better description of that, we'll get it to you.
Commissioner Gage?
I guess to follow up on that, if I can, Chair Volter, how, infusion of cash, how much? Because I am here in this $10 million shortfall and I'm not great at math, but I think that the, the cuts here don't add up to any $10 million.
Yep.
So, what exactly are we talking about as a number?
We'll be able to continue throughout the rest of this year with some sort of a $10 million cash advance. So, that's the planning process that we're going through right now is, we can reduce services and revenue, we believe, will be adjusted. So, the immediate need that we have is around $10 million. Region has a 23 millipac but Network 180 is not responsible for that. So, the question that is on the table for the region right now is how quickly can we reduce, appropriately reduce, within the Medicaid rules, services... we reduce, appropriately reduce, within the Medicaid rules, services to consumers using that other side of the equation that we, as a PHP, can live within our means and move that forward? That's a battle, you know, that we have. So specifically, Network 180, $10 million, and I think that would help the region. The other reason why we have a cash issue is this, the PHP at the end of the month. I think counties have a similar issue. So when there's, you know, we're always going to have a cash issue, you know, in terms of that particular piece. We've just always had the reserves to cover it in the past.
Commissioner Pons, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Pons, did you have a question? Commissioner Pons, do you want to go?
Well, I was just going to say, $10 million in the region, $90 million in the statewide, depending upon whether or not the response to the legislature is regionally or statewide.
Yep.
So my comment is, I think in the bigger scope of things, I just don't think mental health is a priority for the state. And that's what's got to come to a head, because at the end of the game, it's dollars. I mean, Becky was here saying, "They're already planning to, you know, maybe get rid of driver responsibility." That's got to price tag. They want to up the exemption, that's got to price tag. We have the infrastructure dollars that are going to be coming out of the general fund that was promised years ago. That's going to affect departments on the chain. They're only expecting 1.8% growth. It is money, but what the argument needs to be is, is mental health important to the state of Michigan and the legislature and the governor? And if the answer is, no, it's not, which I hope that's not the answer, but it seems like everything they've been doing over the past few years is leading to that goal of privatizing this public system, which used to be one of the best public systems in the country. And we're just here in this argument over dollars. I think the real argument needs to be, is mental health important to the state of Michigan?
Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to share a little testimony from the work that I just retired from last Friday, which was in the homelessness arena. Scott, I have some comfort, I think, with what we've been able to put in place with these. I'd like to differ a little bit and just call out the example of the Herkimer, which is one of the supported housing programs that are mentioned here. The situation there is such that there are 52 individuals who are what we call chronically homeless. They've been homeless for a year or more, and they have a disability. These are very high-need, very fragile people, and they're 52 in one location in the old Herkimer Hotel on Division. Many, probably most of them, receive Medicaid mental health services. But when you put 52 people in one building like that with high needs, that creates additional needs. It often does. And what Dwelling Place, that operates this program, recognizes is that they need extra staff who are on-call in order to manage that. What that does is it keeps people out of the emergency rooms, it keeps people off the streets, it reduces costs for public services, it reduces healthcare costs, all of those things in our community. It's an innovative program. And Denny Sturtevant has clearly said, the Director of Dwelling Place, that if we can't provide that additional funding to be able to do this, he can't do this kind of programming, which it just makes no sense that we would cut a program that's doing so much good and saving us so many costs in other areas. So that, and I would also add that the other programs that are being cut are also similarly innovative, and they're saving costs to other parts of our community. So it's really discouraging that the things that we're doing to make the system work better are the things that we're being forced to cut here. So just wanted to add that little piece to what we're talking about here. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Scott, I think, you know, you really appreciate all this work you put into this, and obviously those weren't directed, those comments aren't directed at you, a disappointment.
Oh, I understand.
But I would like to see or hear or get a follow-up of, you know, how are we working to take care of these individuals that are going to be affected? I just talked to Wayman about being staff focused on, you said that Nuovo Camino is one concern you have. I would appreciate any type of follow-up, maybe?
Okay.
Just to know that we're working on this and somehow we're going to address these concerns for these peoples.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item five, Commissioner miscellaneous. Do you have any today? None? All right. I have a couple of items. I want to congratulate Commissioner Talon on his recent retirement. I liked his little countdown. And then I also want to, I think I did mention it, but we're formulating our legislative priorities. You all, we all interact with different areas of the community. Please submit to me or Commissioner Steck any ideas you may have. You might want to review, we're obviously going to review, things that are still in play from last year. Becky at PAA has given us a great graph, and we can get that out to you again, of kind of the status of each item. I would assume most of those will be on this year's priority list as well, but other things pop up. If you know about them or you think we should focus on them, I'd love to get your input. So with that, we are adjourned.
We are Kent County.
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 Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.